Good evening and welcome to our December 12th, 2022 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have five topics for discussion there, committee briefings, but before we get to that, I'm going to go to the podium and introduce something that I have been looking forward to, many of us have been looking forward to for quite some time. So be right there. So Thursday, December 1st was an incredible day for our community. That is, that is the evening that Quin's Orchard High School won its second state championship in a row. Yeah, round of applause. The game was at Navy Stadium, but the opponent was C.H. Flowers, a very, very good team. The final was 32-7. We actually had that wrong in our backroom material. It was 32-7. Cougars have had two, we've, we have, they have a tremendous program and they've had two incredible years in a row where we've won state championships. I think it's the first time in school history that we've won back-to-back state championships. The team has not lost since the year 2019. I have had friends at times ask me, are you tired of your team winning all the time? And the answer is absolutely not. I'm not tired of it. I'm not going to be tired of it next year either, guys. I go to all the games as you guys, as anybody who knows me or, or has seen me on social media or has any sense of me at all, you guys know I go to, I go to all the games and tweet out all the stuff with, but what you may not know is that with me at most of the games is our city attorney, Lynn Board. Give her a round of applause. With me at several of the games is Lisa Henderson, one of our new council members. And with us in spirit is the entire council. Everybody, everybody here is a QO fan, whether they admit it or not, they are. So Quin's Orchard football teams won three out of the last four state championships. As I said, undefeated since 2019, 30 straight wins. It's just incredible. We are home to the Montgomery County Defensive Player of the Year, Jalen Harvey. We are actually, and I'll note to someone who's not here, we're home to the Offensive Player of the Year, who played for Gaithersburg High School, Gideon Atuka, tremendous player. I mean, I'm a proud mayor. We got a lot of good football is happening in Gaithersburg. I have been saying for long, it's a sort of a tradition in the city of Gaithersburg. Hi, I'm Judd Ashman, proud to serve you as mayor of the greatest city in the world. I think we're the greatest football city in America, honestly. So we're also, QO was also home to the Montgomery County Player of the Year, Kendall Johnson, who I see right here in the audience. Which is a tremendous, tremendous thing. So what I'd like to do here is, I'm not done talking, but I want, I want to give everyone, I want to give everyone a chance here to introduce themselves. And we're gonna, we're gonna have a proclamation, we're gonna take a big picture. So I'd like to invite the team to come, just come one at a time to the mic, introduce yourselves if you want to say what year you're in. Great. And then we'll move from there. So we'll start with Zach. Everyone, just line up on Zach.
I'm Zach Anderson, class of 2023.
I'm Deiraj Varma, class of 2023.
I'm Tristan Kabugwes, class of 2026.
I'm JS Macken, I'm class of 2026.
I'm Ethan Hand, class of 2023.
I'm Rowan Myers, class of 2026.
I'm James Wilson, class of 2025.
I'm Benny Becker, class of 2025.
I'm Sam Silva, class of 24.
I'm Christian Hayes, class of 23.
I'm Mason Mizer, class of 2026.
I'm Evan Church, class of 25.
There he is.
Ken Johnson, class of 2023.
Zach Sarchin, class of 2023.
Isaiah Blackman, class of 24.
Shay Terry, class of 2024.
Stefan Bush, class of 24.
Kenneth Fixing, class of 23.
Emmanuel Connor, class of 24.
Gilmi Eugenio, class of 2023.
Coaches too, principal too, A.D. too. Come on, guys.
John Kelly, football coach, class of 99.
Jeff Rabberman, A.D., class of 97.
Hi, Beth Thomas, proud principal, all the classes.
Bruce Stanley, stat man, class of 69, from Robert E. Perry High School, all Robert E. Perry High School.
All right. So, look, it's, I was thinking about this beforehand. I think about this all the time. Why, you know, what makes this such a special thing for our community? And it's not just that you guys won all these games and most of them by a really wide margin. It's the way that you won. It's the way that you carried yourselves. The QO football team came into this season with the trophy from the previous year and with a ton of talent and with a, a very good chance to repeat. And what that means is that when other teams are looking at their schedule and looking at the calendar and they see QO on it, that's the date that they circle. That's the week that they have their best practice because that's their opportunity to, to make a statement. And they throw everything they've got against you, against you, and sometimes even after the whistle has been blown. But you guys, you guys were all business. When other teams got frustrated and tried to get in your heads, you did not take the bait. You kept your composure, you kept your focus on the big picture, you executed at the highest level. There's, there was no moment this year, nor last, where I was not 100% proud of how this team conducted itself on the field and from my very limited vantage point off the field. Obviously, this speaks to who the players are as quality young men and, and the parents and the families who raised them. It speaks to the leadership of an outstanding coaching staff led by John Kelly, who by the way, currently has the highest winning percentage of any coach in Maryland history. Give him a round of applause for that. It says a lot about the culture at Quin's Orchard High School, which speaks to the leadership of the staff there, our athletic director, Jeff Rabberman, and our wonderful principal, Beth Thomas. But it also speaks of the community that we're in and whom you represent. And my colleagues and I are grateful for that. You are champions and no one can take that away. And you'll never forget that. But you should also know and always remember that your community is proud of you. Not just for the wins, but for how you conducted yourselves while doing it. So tonight, we honor you for all of the above. We have a proclamation. We are, we are proclaiming it Quin's Orchard Cougars Football Day in the city of Gaithersburg. In honor and celebration of the leadership, hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional, exceptional team chemistry of the 2022 Quin's Orchard High School varsity football team, congratulations on winning the Maryland 4A State Football Championship title with an undefeated season for the second year in a row proclaimed this 12th day of December and signed by me. Let's take a picture and I want, I want to give the coach and principal a chance to speak if they will.
If everybody can just...
I don't know how we're gonna do this, but we're gonna...
Maybe take a knee?
Hold on, wait, some guy just came in. Come on, guys.
Scoot on in.
Come on in.
You gotta say your name and your class.
Say, say your name and your class.
Savan Bruth, class of 2023.
All right.
Jalen Harvey, class of 24.
All right, everyone smile. Look like you just won a championship.
All right, can I get everybody to scoot in on the ends, just a little bit more? Act like you love each other. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You good? You back there want to say anything? You good? Okay. Appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
You guys can take this, though.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
I feel like I should have told the council to stand. Were you viewable?
Honestly, even if we had stood, you probably would have said.
Let's just stand and listen to the meeting.
Yes. Thanks, Brucey. Thank you, John. All right, well, while we're having this shuffle, let me invite... Congratulations. Thanks, guys. Okay, Jean and Charlene, please come on up to the table and let's go into our first committee briefing, our senior advisory committee.
Just give us a minute to get our bearings.
Sure.
But in the meantime, I'll say good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Mayor Ashman and council members, and I'm Jean Dinwiddie. I'm chair of the senior advisory committee. So welcome to the members here, both virtually and in person, and those older adults in Gaithersburg joining us tonight. Here is our list of our, our members, and thank you for this opportunity to present an update for you. We want to extend special congratulations to the newly-elected council vice president, Lisa Henderson, our outstanding council liaison. And here are all our smiling faces. We're still meeting virtually. And just as a quick, I know you know, need no reminder, the city is one of the most diverse in the U.S. as we saw reflected in our QO football team. It's a wonderful richness. Older adults are also the fastest-growing segment of the population. So I, I know you've heard this from me before, but I'll just, you know, one more time. We, as older adults, we're workers, we're consumers, we pay taxes, and we vote. So what have we been doing this year? So our FY23 objectives, we've met several. We, last year, we talked about conducting two surveys and we have conducted one of them on the needs of those 55-plus. We've, thanks to you and a little bit the Carnegie, had some functional and cosmetic upgrades at BGC, and that has helped to advance the public image. What we haven't met is adding a question regarding senior issues to the biennial citizen survey. So any help you could give us, that would be appreciated. For FY24, we want to advocate for a new facility that seniors can enjoy. We want to conduct our second survey. That first survey was on the needs of older adults, you know, what, what are your concerns? And we'll talk a little bit more about our results. And the second survey is about awareness and engagement of the center itself. We will continue to collaborate with the County Commission on Aging, on issues of shared interest. Right now, 40% of our senior advisory committee meetings are also commissioners on the county commission. There's only five of us, so that means there's only two commissioners, but still, we collaborate. And we want to recruit members that reflect the city's diverse population. It would be nice to have a man on the committee. We also will advocate for issues highlighted in the survey. So little, some stats on Benjamin Gaither Center, BGC. We have 472 members. That's down slightly from last year. Not surprisingly, mostly female, and the majority of the members are in that 70 to 80 age range. For FY23 highlights of what happened at BGC, we had fitness classes, health programs, including a mobile dentist, flu shots, blood pressure checks, a podiatrist. We have a pharmacist who will do medication checkups, me, but I'm having trouble finding people who think they need their meds checked. Everyone else needs it. We have, sorry, little plug. Our social programs, we've had lots of celebrations, entertainers do a lot of day trips. And for interests of personal interests, we have book club, a tech corner, foreign films, and this is what's been happening at the BGC. The SAC itself has also been very busy. We have had present, we don't have a slide on this one. We've had presentations on Age Friendly Montgomery, on the County Commission on Aging. Carolyn Muller, the Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture, came and talked to us, as did Maureen Herndon, the Community Services Division Chair. We have both Sydney Katz and Council President Gabe Albernaz also came and spoke to us. And more recently, Tammy Bresnahan from AARP came and talked to us on legislative issues that might be of interest to older adults. And we, and last month, Lindsay Wise from Gaithersburg Care came to talk to us. So what we found from our survey, and here you'll see why we had Leslie Wise come, one of the main, two main areas of concern came from that need survey. And it really was just a, are, is this somewhat of a concern or are you very concerned with this? So it was a, a scale where one to five. And the main areas of concern were about affordable housing and food insecurity. Other areas of concern were personal safety and fitness, personal fitness. So what are we gonna do with that? Well, our next steps are, we're gonna educate ourselves on currently available services, identify any potential shortcomings in those services, and advocate for budgetary needs of those service providers. We're also deciding exactly what, we, we may look at doing a food drive. So we're still exploring what we're going to do and educating ourselves on the, we've decided to focus on food insecurity. We want to thank you, I know, move along. We want to thank you for the upgrades to, to the BGC. There's the beautiful pictures, our new bathrooms, hooray, and these beautiful dining room chairs. Thank you. Last year, I thanked you for the refresh of painting that was done at the facility. And so, and we still thank you for that refresh. However, last Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving of '21, there was a boiler leak from the, it was the boiler from the apartments above. And it completely, we were completely closed for two days. The computer desk legs are still damaged, and we had to get a new floor in the exercise room, the Alice Schultz room. And unfortunately, those freshly painted walls now require repainting because there's water drips all down the freshly painted walls. So, and leaks from the apartments above are merely a weekly occurrence. So our longstanding requests, we need a new facility for our seniors, as highlighted by the issues I've just told you. We've outgrown the current facility. We often have to limit the, the number of, like an exercise class, we have to limit the number just because of the size. And what I'd like to, to add, given the education we received this year, we are very open to a multi-generational community center. It's our understanding that that is, is a more, a request more likely to be taken seriously than a standalone senior center. And as we have learned, community centers are usually senior centers during the day, and then community centers in the evening, and it's just given the demographics of the people. Older adults are retired more likely than not, and they're during the day. So we would request that you add construction of a new facility to both the FY25 Capital Improvement Plan and the City Master Plan. And be sure to include the needs of older adults in the Lake Forest Development Plan. So if we had this new facility, what's our dream for this new facility? It would be larger meeting rooms, maybe a barter, a pottery studio, a carpentry shop. If you visit some of the community centers around the county, or even in the city of Rockville, there's just amazing possibilities. We could look at possibly, you know, pickleball is all the rage for any age, so in a bigger facility, we could have pickleball. And potentially a senior center plus program, which is a more structured activity for those who need more help, for those older adults needing more help in navigating the, the activities of the center. Our short-term requests are, as always, functional and cosmetic upgrades. And the biggie I would like to really emphasize is sidewalk railings. And that's, that's really a safety issue, more than anything else. There, there's just a little curb that people have to, to step up because the ramp is, if you've been to the center, you know, it's sort of a long thing, and the ramp is all the way at one end. And if you park at the other end, you have a little curb you have to step up. And people have taken falls there, correct, Charlene? So that's a real safety issue. We just need a grab bar. You know, it doesn't have to be a fancy railing, just a place that people won't fall. The floors need replacing, and it would be wonderful to have new pool tables. We would also appreciate your continued support for our survey. You were very supportive of our need survey, and our next one then is an awareness, a BGC awareness. And we would like to add a question to, about senior issues to the biennial survey. And before questions, I want to thank Charlene, Smitty, Carolyn Muller, and all the staff at BGC. They do a marvelous job, and we're fortunate to have such dedicated and talented people supporting the older adults of Gaithersburg who, just as a reminder, spend money, pay taxes, and vote. So. Questions?
Okay. First off, thank you for the presentation, Jean. Thank you, Mary, for being here. And for the committee in general, thanks, Lisa, for apparently being an outstanding liaison in your first year.
Exceptional.
Well done. Just a couple of follow-ups here. First, you, you thank us for the, for the new bathrooms, and I wanted to give a special shout-out to Dennis Enslinger because in the last budget, he, I guess I, it was around the time of the passing of the budget that I heard from, from somebody in the senior commi, advisory committee, talking about the bathrooms and the need. And, and I called Dennis and I said, is this, is it in the budget? And he said, currently, it's not, but we can see if we can find a way to get it in, into there. And, and he did. So I want to, I want to give him, and Tanisha, who had to okay it, obviously, they get, they get all the credit for those. We, we actually, we've always taken the request for a new facility very seriously. And, you know, even before this presentation, the council had asked Tanisha to give us some sort of feasibility potential for a new senior center, whether it's, you know, standalone or, or shared use. I, I agree, it's, it's more likely to come to fruition if it's some sort of shared use thing. And so we, we are following up, everyone's taking it seriously here. So I just want you to note that. I think some of these requests, the sidewalk railings, I mean, and, and flooring, and pool tables, we can, we can ask staff and see where we are on that. But thank you for all that, for bringing it to our attention. And thanks so much for all the programming and the good work you're doing with the committee to help enhance the lives of our seniors. That's, I was just really impressed with the, the scope of programming that you guys have had over the last year. It's pretty awesome. So kudos. And we also are grateful for Charlene and for Smitty and for Carolyn Muller. I'm gonna go to Lisa, since she's the liaison, and then anybody else who wants to jump in. Go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm coming off of a sinus infection, so I sound worse than I feel. Jean, thank you. Charlene, thank you. The presentation was, was excellent. You leave me with little questions. Thank you for bringing up the multi-generational facility. When then-President Gabe Albernaz came and spoke with us, he highlighted how Montgomery County had stopped building individual standalone centers because of not just the expense to build, but the expense to also maintain. Also highlighted, even, you know, we, we look at these centers as times that when the children are in school, that the seniors can use and vice versa. But he also talked about cooking classes that were done together within these centers, which, which, you know, gives an opportunity for seniors to learn from youth and youth to learn from seniors and, and just, you know, really builds on, on the community that we all live in and love. So thank you for, for putting that option out there. Can you talk a little more about the sidewalk, sidewalk need? There was an, an injury, I understand. You, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, Charlene, can you?
So as Jean was explaining, we only have one handicap, handicap ramp, and it's a really long building. So you have to either step up from a curb, and it's just a normal-sized curb, to walk on the sidewalk, or you walk in the parking lot. And as you get older and frailer, your depth procession, uh, perception fails a little. And so we just need like some grab rails at a few spots, just so people have something to hold themselves steady. Because we've had seniors fall, or even seniors helping seniors, so one will fall, and then the other one falls right on top of them. So we've had, you know, some minor injuries just from slight falls. So just a little, a couple of grab rails here and there, and a few spots would really enhance the safety of the center.
Thank you.
And protect the city. Right?
Right, and protect the city, correct. And, and last, just thank you all. It, it's a small team, but absolutely mighty. The work that you guys do as a, as a commission, as a committee is amazing. I'm in awe every time I sit on the, the session. So, so thank you all, everyone who's here, for all the work that you do. And I know some folks are dialing in as well, because it is incredible. To, to the mayor's point, the programming that you just went through this year is incredible. And it's a great time to go hang out at the Benjamin Gaither Center, because there's always a good time. All right, thank you.
Who'd like to go next? Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo everything that's been said. Really appreciate the work of the committee. Last time-
Last time, Lisa and I were there together at the center. It was a dance party.
Yep.
That was a lot of fun. And I just wanted to make an observation. For those of us who've been around a little while, working on these issues, you'll recall that a number of years ago, the Memorandum of Understanding between the city and the county on providing senior center services diverged, shall we say? And as a result, going forward from that point, folks who were not residents of the city of Gaithersburg, but who still wanted to become members and participate in our center's activities and programs, had to pay a differentiated dues structure, differentiated rate. And I noticed in your presentation tonight that, according to the latest data, 58% of the members of the center are Gaithersburg residents, which means that 42% are not Gaithersburg residents and are paying that differentiated higher rate to still participate in the Benjamin Gaither Center and its programs. And to me, that is a wonderful testament to the fact that it is a bargain, and that it is such a vibrant center in our community and our county, that people even outside the city are willing to pay the differentiated higher rate. So, I just, I saw that data point, and I really just wanted to call that out and congratulate all of you, because I think that is very telling. As the mayor said, we take your requests, the larger ones and the, you know, the more short-term ones, very seriously, and continue to try and weigh all the options. You know, it's unfortunately a zero-sum game when we're budgeting, and we have a lot of projects. But we know how important this center is. We can tell from your enthusiasm and from the success of all the programs, and, you know, all the feedback about our staff, which is obviously completely true and warranted about how great they are. So, again, I just wanted to say thank you, and that we acknowledge you, and that we certainly will take your requests seriously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Rob, then Neil.
Sure. I, I don't have anything to add, other than what the illustrious vice president and the gentleman in the jacket.
Fantastic jacket.
Well, let's, let's not, let's not, not talk about Rob's shirt.
Yeah, there's a point there.
Hawaiian Santa.
Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for the presentation. And, and, you know, since I've been on the council, the discussions have been very serious towards providing the amenities that our, our aging population needs. Now, I understand we haven't gotten there, but we're going to continue to strive.
Thanks, Rob, and good night.
All right, a couple of things. First of all, thank you for the presentation and for the good work, as always. So, I'm a little concerned about the leaks from the apartments of above. Who runs that facility? That's not a city facility, right?
HOC.
It's an HOC thing?
HOC.
Is there any way, have we tried working with them to remediate those issues? Because that's not normal.
So, unfortunately, it's an apartment building. They did, during the pandemic, replace all the pipes, because it was built for hotel, not apartments. So, all the pipes have been enlarged. So, it's much better. But people still overflow their sinks, or overflow their bathtubs, and things like that. So, and we're on the bottom floor. So, water, you know, always slows down. And then the boiler leak was replaced, but it did, we did have to shut down for two days to replace the boiler. And it was, since it happened on Thanksgiving night, boiling hot water just flowed into the center. And that's why, we just have drip marks down the walls. They are going to have all of that painted, but we were waiting until the boiler was replaced before we did that.
That I understand. I just, you know, overflowing a sink and other things like that, doesn't seem like it should happen all that often. So, I, I would hope that there would be a conversation with HOC about that. You know, regarding a multi, multi-use, multi-age facility, and, you know, in conjunction with the fact that Lake Forest is small and is likely to be revitalized sometime soon, I think there's an interesting conversation that could happen. Because one of the goals of that project is to build some sort of community facility. There have been a number of ideas bandied about, and no decision has been made, and no feasibility studies have been done. So, I think that's a good one to tee up and see if it's something that, that works for everybody.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All the generations benefit from, from being with each other, from intergenerational activities. I, I would, one little thing, when we're looking at that multi-generational, you know how Amtrak has a quiet car? We might just want to have, in that multi-generational facility, a, a quiet car. Just, just a thought.
All right. We'll go to Jim.
I'll do that in my house, actually.
Not a bad idea. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, right? Jean, thank you so much for the, the presentation, and for all the work of, of the committee. I was also going to ask about the, the leaks, and I think it's important that that gets addressed, for sure. And, you know, just to kind of put a, a final bow on it, this conversation we have been having actively about, you know, the need for another space. And it, it's not something that we're just saying to say, like, within the past couple of months. So, it is top of mind, that we do understand the importance of it. And unlike, you know, different demographics, racial demographics, the older demographic is something that we are all going to age into, you know? So, regardless of, you know, who you are, one of the great things about all the wonderful things that we're doing here in Gaithersburg is people want to stay. And people are staying, and they're going to end up in this. So, at some point or another, ideally, all Gaithersburg residents will have the ability to take advantage of the Benjamin Gaither Center, or wherever the new facility is. So, it's incredibly important. And I will be there at, with my pickleball racket when it opens, because I cannot play tennis anymore. But I did actually injure myself playing pickleball, which was kind of funny. And I'm like, "Okay, this is just bad." Which is why I stay on my bike. But no, seriously, thank you for, for all the good work. And it is really important to be able to, just to, you know, keep people active. And I have a number of friends who have older parents and, and doing the, you know, the sandwich generation thing, and, you know, talking about the, the challenges that are faced by families who don't have that ability to be active, and, and the decline that they see. So, it's really important to provide those things and encourage people to use them. And if you're not, and you don't know what we're talking about, you know, take a look, because it, as Lisa said very enthusiastically as soon as she got elected, it really is a wonderful facility that we have here. And kudos to everybody who keeps that moving forward.
Thanks, Jim. Okay. Is there anybody who'd like to testify? And actually, Michelle, flip that podium around, just in case we get some testimonies. Does anybody wants to add anything to this tonight at the podium? If not, I'm going to take a quick look and see if anybody on, if we have anybody on Zoom who wants to, okay. If you're watching this meeting on Zoom and you'd like to testify, just use the Zoom raise hand function, and we'll call on you. Going once, going twice. Okay, I do not see a raised hand. So, thank you guys very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. We're going to move on to our next one. And next, we have the Book Festival. Dear, dear to my heart. Garina Isasi and Carolyn Crosby, welcome. And I'm going to welcome Kathleen Benson, too, who's sitting in the audience, who's our new co-lead on the Book Festival.
If I had known there was such festive dress code, I would have dressed accordingly.
You could have, it's true.
Are we ready? Yes.
You wouldn't have beaten Ryan in the jacket.
No, I don't think so.
That's unbeatable.
I was pressured into wearing this tonight, but we'll talk about that another time.
Wonderful.
Okay. There you go.
When you are, yeah. Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor Ashman and city council members. My name's Garina Isasi, as I just said. I am a member of the Gaithersburg Book Festival Committee as the Adult Workshops Chair. I'm an author myself, and a communications professional. And I share my love for writing by organizing the festival's workshops for teens and adults. I'm delighted to be here tonight to update you on the accomplishments of the activities of the Gaithersburg Book Festival.
And Garina, you've been on the committee for?
Since 2011.
Yeah, 11 years.
Second, second book festival. Year, yeah. And, okay. So, it's our mission to foster an interest in reading, writing, and literary conversation for people of all ages in Gaithersburg and beyond, by bringing together world-class authors to share their stories and craft of writing in an intimate, accessible, and dynamic festival setting. Are we on three?
This thing is very sensitive.
Uh-oh. The Gaithersburg Book Festival, fondly known as GBF, which I think you all know, may be the most grassroots book festival of its size in the nature. Most book festivals of this size are organized by booksellers, universities, or media outlets. We, however, are originated within the community, and we are organized in part by the community. It reflects the diversity of our community and supports economic development within our community. Over the past 13 years, GBF has brought hundreds of top-notch authors to Gaithersburg, for book lovers to enjoy, learn from, and interact with, all in one beautiful location on a literary packed day. This past year, the Book Festival took place in a new location at Boer Park. It was usually on the City Hall Center facility area. The location, the new location offers ample space to accommodate growth in both programming and attendance. And it also provides the advantage of several indoor amenities, not the least of which, especially this year, was air conditioning, and real restrooms that are not porta-bodies. Despite the oppressive heat this past year, an estimated 18,500 people attended. And after a three-year hiatus, it was really great to be back in person. Feedback on the new location has been largely positive, with parking presenting the biggest challenge. The committee and staff, our staff planners, are already discussing possible solutions for improvement around that. The GBF Committee consists of approximately 20 devoted members, who have strong ties in our community. Members are school media specialists, aspiring and professional writers, English teachers and educators, public relations specialists, and avid readers who adore books. They are the roots of the festival, supporting its growth and ensuring its success. The members also contribute to reinvigorating the committee year after year by attracting new members, having new ideas, and fresh perspectives. This year's Book Festival Committee worked together with the city of Gaithersburg's staff to recruit over 120 acclaimed and up-and-coming authors. We recruit, we coordinated 16 children's, teens, and adult workshops, many taught by presenting authors, and one workshop that was conducted completely in Spanish, which has been happening for the past four years, I believe. The part, we've partnered with the Multicultural Affairs Committee to provide stories and readers for the multicultural Storytime Tent. We've coordinated the festival's 12th Annual High School Writing Contest, a poetry-themed contest that generated 185 submissions from counties in Maryland, Virginia, and in the District of Columbia. We implement a robust public relations agenda, consisting of, of monthly e-newsletters that reach over 3,000 subscribers, several press releases that highlighted specific programming, regular social media posts, and the festival coverage of over 26 publications. We plan, coordinate, and host VIP author reception on the eve of the festival. And this committee all volunteered where they were needed on a very hot day of the festival. The strength of these roots provides the foundation of the involvement of our community, the branches, if you will. This past year, we had over 200 volunteers, all trained to ensure the festival ran smoothly. Multiple local organizations provided literary-themed activities in the Children's Village. We had 10 partners and 38 sponsors collectively providing media promotions, author hospitality, and just over $27,000 in monetary donations for the festival. Politics and prose, the festival bookseller reported record sales this past year. Dozens of local introducers and moderators volunteered their time and expertise. And 80 local authors, publishers, booksellers, and other literary groups set up booths. So, the Gaithersburg Books Festival has developed a reputation as one of the country's top literary events. We even occasionally receive calls from acclaimed authors requesting to be part of it. And the majority of participating authors always request to be invited back the following year, or when their next book comes out. Festival attendees are enthusiastic about the event as well. More than 95% of the survey respondents reported that they're likely to attend again next year. And so, I'll take, we'll take a few minutes to share some of the comments from the surveys, as you can see on the slides. Ones, "I love the wide variety of exhibitors, programs, and events available for attendees of all ages. Thanks for inviting so many diverse authors. It was a wonderful event. Everything was extremely organized. Boer Park was perfect. My favorite event of the year, Children's Village, was amazing. My six- and three-year-olds enjoyed it very so much. And a great job. Thank you for bringing such a wonderful event to our community." So, overall, I'd say this year, this festival was a great success. Thank you. And if you have any questions, Carolyn and I would be happy to answer some.
Garina, thank you so much for the presentation. Carolyn, you did a good job, job driving there. I, I just want to underscore how unusual and awesome the structure of this is, because the people who are, who are programming this are volunteers and book lovers. And the people who are doing logistics are event professionals. And it's, obviously, it's a city endeavor, city, a city facility. Boer Park turned out to be excellent. It's the melding of these parts of our community that really make it different from most places, from most other book festivals. I am part of a book festival directors group that has directors, that includes directors from, from all of the big book events in the country. We are literally unique in the way that we are structured and how this works. It's, and it's, it's, it's just a wonderful thing. So, I do want to note, at the end, I love the quotes. They, I feel like it's generally representative, but I do, I just want to note, to be fair, we do get the occasional complaint in, on the survey feedback. Sometimes it's, you know, it's about, "I didn't find the right parking." Sometimes it's about, "I wanted a different food than was available." It's not all, but it's, it's mostly. It's mostly, "We love this, and it's the greatest thing ever, but, but I didn't want to," you know, I do want to be fair about this. And I am biased. Everyone, for those who don't know, who may be watching this, I'm the founder and chair of this book festival, so I am biased about it. And with that said, anybody want to comment on any part of this? Neil?
So, first of all, it's a great event. It's been a great event every year, rain or shine. The oppressive heat was moderated by the fact that we had the activity center, and you could go in and cool off. So, I, I think the venue was absolutely perfect. I really love the fact that we've moved it, you know, due to circumstances, but I think it proved to be a keeper. And hopefully, we will, you know, build on that. And you'll, you know, hopefully, you'll figure out what to do about the parking situation, and we'll move on from there. You know, my, my only comment is, you know, you need more science fiction, but otherwise, it's all good.
Rob?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I'll just share my personal journey with the Book Festival. You know, I'm not a big fan of books. And so, you know, every year, the Book Festival comes around, and, and the mayor assigns me a book. And, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity for me to read the first 10 pages and last 10 pages of the, the big unmoderated.
Don't tell me that.
There are graphic novels out there.
Ask him for comic books, but he never assigns me a comic book. No, seriously, it's a, it's a highlight event, I think, for the community, for myself as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Anybody want to, Lisa, go ahead.
I don't know how to follow that. Thank you for the presentation. I was, I didn't know how this was going to work at Boer Park, just because of the vastness of it. And then, when the heat was announced, I said, "Oh, my gosh." But it was amazing. It, it was an amazing event. I had a great time. Friends and family came. I, to receive, mostly compliments, but any complaint I did receive was about the parking. What are some of your thoughts about alternatives for next year? Um, what are some of your thoughts about, uh, alternatives for next year? Did you, were, were you guys thinking about any?
Yeah, well, we're in the process of brainstorming and trying to figure out how we can expand. Um, there were actually some procedural misunderstandings with how to use the high school parking lot as well. So, throughout the day of the book festival, there was actually more parking in there than, you know, it had been closed, and so I think we just need to look at how to use that parking lot better and then seek out other parking lot partners, if you will.
That makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, congratulations on, on a very successful event. I agree that, uh, Boer Park worked out really, really well. It was the first time I've had the opportunity to introduce, uh, an author and, uh, and part of the reason, uh, pick the, the book that, that I got to introduce was that the, the author's mom, who she writes about, had the same last name, and we may be cousins, so it was an interesting conversation. Um, but that being said, um, loved having it at Boer, um, having that air conditioning respite was really important. Um, I, I did hear some lament, uh, lamentations that, you know, fewer and fewer things are happening at City Hall and, and having that Old Town presence, so, um, you know, not saying that, that's a reason not to have the book festival there, but maybe that opens the door to, to look at bringing something back into Old Town, whether it's, uh, you know, taking the, one of the, uh, older events that we used to do, like an Old Town Day or something like that at a different time of year. But, um, all that being said, um, it's my wife's favorite event of the year. Um, I keep telling her she needs to join the committee. We've actually talked to the mayor about it, um, so you may have yet another member joining, um, soon. Um, but, uh, congratulations and thank you for all the work that you do.
Thanks, Jim. Ryan?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, I've been participating since the very first festival a dozen years ago, and it's been my pleasure and honor to do so, and, um, I also just want to add, uh, you know, uh, to salute the committee, uh, the staff, the mayor, uh, for creating and building upon and growing such an excellent event that really is one more big signature thing to put our city on the map. And I hope I don't get in trouble by dipping my toe into something that is sort of, might be considered a little bit of a political statement here, um, but I, I just want to say, particularly in these times, how important it is for us to be doing an event like this every year, when there, um, is a frightening ascendant movement in a lot of places in America, uh, to restrict access to books of diverse perspectives, and I want to salute, uh, the committee and, and the mayor and the staff for really, uh, consciously and thoughtfully working on ways to continue to improve, uh, the diverse representation at the event, and we even saw that in one of the comments in your survey slide. Um, and, you know, it just underscores how important the work that you all are doing continues to be, uh, and will continue to be, um, to have, uh, a community like the one we have in Gaithersburg that, uh, puts education and reading and the creative arts on a pedestal, uh, and keeps it, uh, open and accessible and, um, maintains those diverse perspectives and welcoming perspectives, um, at our events. So, uh, I just want to say, say thank you for that and, um, and just sort of remind everybody how important that is these days.
I want to speak to that point a little bit and, and, um, put it back on this council a little bit, uh, because the thing that would get, look, of, of the top, I think I've seen stats of like the top twenty most banned books in the U.S. We've hosted a couple of those authors, and we're, we're proud to have done it. If we don't have the support of the council on this event, uh, if you guys, if it, if it, I'm not saying there's anybody at this dais who this would have to, but if, if our council would, were to sort of get scared off by, um, the content of a book, um, you know, it's, without your support, we don't have a book festival. So, it is, I, I'm proud of the committee, I'm proud of our staff for, for, uh, building what we've built and for supporting the authors that we've supported, but without your support, you guys get wobbly about it, we're in trouble. So, you know, the thank you goes to, to the council, too. We, you know, we have some tough subjects in the, in the books, in these presentations. Uh, I think they're important discussions to have, uh, but, you know, there are other communities that are handling that differently, and I'm, it's another reason why Gaithersburg is the greatest in the world. So, that said, um, we have, I don't know, did we, did we save the, did we tell people to save the date? Save the date for the next book festival. It's May twentieth. It's always, we're always doing it on the third Saturday of May. Um, so, May twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and we are starting, very quietly, starting to load authors that will be appearing on our website, gaithersburgbookfestival.org. We probably have, I don't know, twenty authors up there already. Uh, most-
Any science fiction?
You know who wants, you know who wants to, um, Arcady Martin?
Yeah, she was there.
Yeah.
I introduced her for her first book.
Yeah, she won the Hugo-
Which won the Hugo Award this year.
She, uh, her book actually will not be out, but she wants to come to the festival anyway to sort of preview what's gonna come. I don't know how you say no to Arcady Martin, so.
Well, why would you do that?
Yeah, so, so anyway, well, anyway, so, we're gonna, we're working on sci-fi, but, um, I agree, it hasn't been the strongest area of the festival, but not, not for lack of trying.
Well, we had John Scousie last year. He was terrific.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'm really happy we had him. Um, is there anybody here who would like to add anything on this topic? Okay. Um, Jamil, you know the, the rules. Three minutes, state your name, please, go right ahead.
Hi, Janujan Hernandez-Catlinz. I just have one small gripe on the book festival. So, if the mayor ever asks you to present an author, I don't know, not reading the book was an option. Sort of eighteen hundred pages, and the author got COVID the night before. All night preparing, because you've got thirty seconds to, because you're there to see the author, not whoever's introducing them, stressed out, uh, on it, so that, that was the only thing, but it was great, just, it was a great event.
Mr. Emil, you could have done the presentation.
I was gonna say, we should have just let him go.
So, the feedback was, "Don't allow the authors to get COVID."
He wants a shorter book next time.
Yeah, right, and make sure, make sure they write shorter books.
That's right.
Okay, alright.
You give a shorter book this, this coming year.
Can I have a request? I, I would love to see a Gaithersburg Book Festival app. I would love to see an app to prepare for the day, oh, you know, every workshop I want to go to.
Where you can create a schedule, and it reminds you, it sends you alerts and all that good stuff, right?
An app would be way more fun.
Yeah.
No, do you want me to speak on that?
Yeah, I want you to talk about it, Carolyn.
Uh, we did have that, um.
Maybe.
Three years?
Three, four years ago.
No, no, no.
Oh, oh, yeah, um.
It was like in our fourth or fifth book festival.
Yeah, a, and I know we had it for at least two years, possibly three. Um, and there were so many problems with it, so many issues, so much malfunction, um, just hundreds of hours of people putting in information and, because the book festival, I, I totally understand what you're saying, like that, because there's so much going on and you want to be able to have things, you know, alert you and pop up, but it's, um, it's many small events underneath one big event, so it's really, we're having hundreds of events going on in one day, so like, the, it, the app had a hard, I mean, and we tried more than one kind of app, but it had a hard time taking all the different levels of information, all the different types of programming. It just, we, I mean, we could look at trying it again, but it did not work.
That, that would, as one of the certified geeks on the dais, uh, that would be great to take another look, even.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's something that, um, our youth organization can take a look at. Those, you know, the, the younger they, they are, seems like the more technically capable they are.
Well, yeah, go ahead, Carolyn.
Well, I, I was gonna add, too, that, um, so, we put our, all of ourselves into this, it, hours and hours to make it re, work well, to make it perfect, and I think we had maybe four or five people used it.
Really?
Really. So, that made it even worse. That was like, "Oh, my gosh, we put so much into this and people aren't using it," and the, um, one, it was new and not a, you know, we advertised it, but not, you know, there's still lots of people who aren't going to know about it, and then, um, but even in the second and possibly third year, um, it was a low participation rate, and, I mean, and this is changing, too, but our percentage of attendees is like fifty-plus.
We get the point. So, I was gonna say, if-
Maybe that's why.
If they're, you as an IT professional, if you are aware of something the county is using or that we, like a solution we should take a look at for something like this, we would, we can take a look.
I'm on it.
The one, the one, I agree with Carolyn. What, what we had years ago was, took hundreds of hours to get the data in and didn't seem to be justified by the, by the usage. Also, I think there was some issue with the, uh, connection, which was at City Hall then. It might be better at Boer Park. So, there were other, there were other issues, too. But, yeah, we're open to ideas.
Okay, alright.
Yes.
Alright, I'm, I'm digging in. Alright.
Yeah, send me, send me anything you find or any, any leads.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'll see you both very soon. Um, we're gonna move to our next committee briefing. I did look at, just for the record, I did look at Zoom. There was nobody raising their hand on Zoom. Um, next, we have Environmental Affairs Committee. I'd like to invite Jeanette Rosenbaum, Chloe Malouf, and Deb Moran.
That was pretty weird, too.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All yours. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jeanette Rosenbaum, the Chair of the Environmental Affairs Committee. This is Chloe Malouf, our very capable Vice Chair, and this is our annual briefing. As a quick recap, the mission of the Environmental Affairs Committee, or EAC, is to advise the mayor and council on environmental issues, promote environmental education and outreach activities, monitor county, state, and federal regulations for environmental impact on city operations, explore new environmental initiatives, and support the city's Green Month celebration and programs related to green building, climate protection, pollution prevention, and watershed protection. Our mission supports the city's environment strategic direction to meet the needs of the city in a manner that accurately reflects the community's desire for environmental health and economic prosperity, without compromising the ability of future generations to meet those same needs. Last year, we set ambitious goals for ourselves, including increasing community engagement in environmental initiatives, planning a full calendar of environmental activities, improving environmental justice in Gaithersburg, offering more ways to live sustainably, and advocating for better management of wild spaces. In January of this year, we created workgroups to pursue those goals. We'll come back to the progress of those workgroups in just a minute. Meanwhile, the EAC proposed a number of ideas for the new Sustainable Maryland Action Plan, and city staff diligently pursued those initiatives. That included the ongoing LED streetlight conversion, the H2O summit, the heat mapping project that occurred over the summer, the headwater study that is going on right now, and the meadow planting project near Public Works that may be coming soon. Staff also continued to support the two active composting drop-offs at Public Works and at Casey Community Center, and they are working on launching a curbside composting program. Thanks to the excellent work by staff, this year, Gaithersburg recertified as a sustainable Maryland city and advanced from bronze to silver, which is the highest level currently available. Finally, later in the year, we created one more workgroup to advocate for better salt management practices. Let's take a look at what our six workgroups have accomplished this year.
Can I just interrupt for a sec?
Yes, you may.
I just, Ryan whispered in my ear, it, it reminded me of a point that, um, you know, we, we improved from the bronze to the silver in Sustainable Maryland. Um, it's the high, it actually, it's, both times were the highest awards that they were offering. Um, they had, because their thinking is they haven't come up with the criteria for gold and platinum yet, uh, and before silver, there was years of bronze, that was the highest you can get. So, I just wanted to be clear, we are achieving at the highest level in Sustainable Maryland, and it just confusing, it's confusing as far as I'm concerned, the way that they handled this, these award levels. So, go ahead.
Yes, they cannot come up with criteria that are difficult enough for us.
That's what I like to say, Jeanette.
That's not happening. I'm okay winning.
Push the envelope.
Go ahead.
As for our workgroups, first up, our Community Engagement and Awareness Workgroup, which mainly focuses on attending events hosted by other organizations, which are excellent opportunities to meet new people and talk to them about the EAC's work. Since our last annual presentation, we've attended the Gaithersburg Community Summit and the Gaithersburg HOA Summit, and we've met with several local groups. We also created an informational brochure about the EAC, and we are working on designing additional promotional items. This workgroup also keeps track of the Green in Gaithersburg e-newsletter, which currently has six hundred and sixty subscribers. Our Year-Round Activities Workgroup has taken over the longstanding and popular Annual Environmental Awards. This year, we were delighted to honor a total of sixteen individuals and groups with eight achievement awards, six appreciation awards, and two Green Friends of Gaithersburg awards. The winners were celebrated on social media and in e-newsletters. For Green Month in April, we hosted a virtual film screening of Inhabitants. Forty-six people watched this documentary, bless you, which follows five Native American tribes across deserts, coastlines, forests, and prairies as they restore their traditional land management practices. We also started a new tradition with the first Gaithersburg Fix-It Fair, sponsored by our Sustainability Workgroup. Seven volunteer fixers attempted thirty-four fixes and achieved a ninety-five percent success rate. The thirty-two fixes were celebrated by ringing the gong that Mayor Ashman generously lent to us. During Green Month, we also held an e-waste and shredding event, which resulted in six tons of paper shredded, one thousand two hundred twenty-nine pounds of e-waste recycled, and seven hundred and fifty pounds of food donated. That was followed by an even more successful November event, which saw ten tons of paper shredded, two thousand seven hundred thirty-two pounds of e-waste recycled, and eighteen hundred pounds of food donated. Finally, our Year-Round Activities Workgroup launched a community cleanup form and a volunteer form to assist with ongoing event planning. Our Environmental Justice Workgroup has been working tirelessly all year to ensure that everyone in Gaithersburg shares equally in environmental benefits like clean air, clean water, and access to nature. The workgroup designed a survey aimed at assessing the distribution of services and environmental benefits in the city. That survey has now been approved by the city manager, and we expect to launch in February. The workgroup has been focusing heavily on doing community outreach and creating a plan for wider distribution of the survey. We hope to get a good representative response, and we will then evaluate the results and draft an advisement letter with recommendations for improving environmental justice in Gaithersburg. Our newest workgroup has picked up the initiative that was started in December twenty twenty-one, when Carl Van Nest presented to the EAC about the problems caused by excessive use of road salt. In February twenty twenty-two, City Attorney Lynn Board graciously educated us about what steps we might take to address these problems. We then began dra- us about what steps we might take to address these problems. We then began drafting a potential new ordinance that would require property owners to clean up leftover road salt after it has done its job of melting snow and ice. In August, we conducted a pilot survey of salt applicators who had attended a smart salt training. To get more feedback on our proposal, we're now working on distributing a similar survey to owners of commercial properties in Gaithersburg. Over the summer, Carl joined our committee. He then promptly spun off the road salt initiative into its own work group and added two more related goals. Those are to secure an update to Ordinance eight dash thirteen, to add a time clause to the requirement about cleaning up salt spills, and to persuade the mayor and council to direct staff to collect and share salt use data in pounds per single lane mile, which will allow us to compare our salt use with that of neighboring jurisdictions. Last but not least, our Off Trail Team Work Group has been actively visiting sites around Gaithersburg using a documentation form they developed to note native and invasive plants and animals, interesting natural and cultural features, problems like erosion and trash, and promising places for new trails. The Off Trail Team is also organizing meetings with Public Works, G-Park, and other staff to identify partnership opportunities and create processes for submitting work requests to staff. Following all our successes this year, we of course set ourselves some new goals for twenty twenty-three. In no particular order, but spread across two slides, in twenty twenty-three, we would like to sponsor even more community building activities, such as native plant giveaways and tree planting events. We would also like to continue existing sustainability events. First on our list is a second Fix-It Fair, which will be held Saturday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-three. You may have just heard about some other event that will be held on May twentieth, but you should plan to come to the Fix-It Fair as well. We anticipate an expanded event incorporating a variety of ways to help people reduce waste.
We can fix old books?
We're, we're gonna have to fix this date. We're gonna.
We can fix the date. As mentioned earlier, in twenty twenty-three, we plan to complete the Environmental Justice Survey. While the survey is open, we will be connecting with networks in the city to increase awareness of and participation in this important initiative. By the end of twenty twenty-three, we expect to submit to you a final proposal for a new ordinance regarding cleanup of leftover salt. We are also confident that within the next twelve months, you will have adopted a time clause update to Ordinance eight dash thirteen and directed staff to collect salt use data in pounds per single lane mile. Although this EAC tradition has been on hold for a little while, in the coming year, we plan to resume meeting and collaborating with other city advisory committees and organizations. We have long recognized that the EAC overlaps with just about every other committee, and we know there are more opportunities for partnership. Similarly, we plan to engage more with the local watershed groups, the Muddy Branch Alliance and the Seneca Creek Watershed Partners, which each cover about half of Gaithersburg, and the Watts Branch Watershed Alliance, which covers the remaining area. Continuing with our plans for next year, we have set an ambitious goal to advocate for the city of Gaithersburg to develop and adopt a non-native invasive plant management plan. Our current understanding is that staff have formed a work group to draft such a plan, and our Off Trail Team will review that draft. We are looking forward to partnering with staff on this desperately needed initiative. We also intend to advocate for Gaithersburg to develop and adopt a climate action plan. Montgomery County has such a plan and has begun putting out annual reports on its progress, but Gaithersburg does not have a local equivalent. With the window for climate action rapidly closing, we would like to see Gaithersburg organize its existing efforts into a single overarching plan and identify opportunities to do even more to reduce emissions, mitigate climate risks, and adapt to unavoidable change. And finally, we plan to recommend improvements to the Rainscapes Rewards Program, an excellent but underutilized city initiative. We think a few simple changes would help encourage residents to use sustainable practices like installing rain barrels and gardening with native plants. All of this work is made possible by the outstanding and dedicated members of the EAC. This year, we lost one of our senior members, Paul Levinka, whose wealth of knowledge and legacy of passion led to significant contributions. Paul was also a great resource for new members. He certainly made me feel welcome on the committee and in Gaithersburg more broadly. In twenty twenty-two, we gained two new members, Carl Van Nest, mentioned earlier as a true champion for smarter salting, and Adam Young, sitting behind me, whom you have met through his outreach work. We are very glad to have them. We are also delighted that this year you renewed the terms of Zainab Abbas, Christine Chin Choi, and Chloe Malouf, all of whom have been doing fantastic work in their respective areas of interest. And of course, we have to mention our staff liaisons, Deb Moran and Michael Wyand, both of whom are sitting in the back, both of whom are incredibly knowledgeable and hardworking. Deb and Mike make things happen. We could not do it without them. We currently have nine members and zero open seats. We will continue to hold our meetings virtually in the coming year, and we are now able to take virtual public comment. We invite all members of the community to attend any of our meetings and join the conversation. We thank the mayor and council for their support, and we look forward to continuing to work with them in twenty twenty-three. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Jeanette. Thank you, Chloe. Appreciate the presentation. It's really, you really did a great job. It's comprehensive. Um, for a long ti- like you are, you are carrying on a tradition of a very dedicated and creative and ambitious committee, and I see with two pages of, of goals for the year, um, that you are, you are really carrying it on. Uh, and that's, it's much appreciated. I, I feel like Gaithersburg, uh, because largely because of the work of this committee, also because of our staff, um, has been right at the cutting edge of a lot of environmental policymaking since I've been here for fifteen years. Um, so we appreciate it, and um, I'm gonna turn it to, um, Rob, you're the, you're the liaison to this?
The website says so.
Okay. All right. Have you, all right. I'm gonna turn to you first.
Thank you. And, and, uh, may I call, again, I think I showed up to one meeting this past last year. It, it's during kitty bath time, so it's kind of difficult. But I do appreciate all the work, and they do keep me up to date on, on what's going on, and there's, um, every so often quite a flurry of emails surrounding the great initiatives that are going on and have you take part in that. And once my kids learn to bathe themselves, you know, I'll, I'll be attending more.
All right. Anyone else have any comments or questions? We'll go with you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Jeanette, thank you so much. Chloe, Adam, everybody who's involved with the committee, thank you for, for all of your work. I was, you know, scribbling notes and actually my pencil went flying, so I was kind of laughing at myself. Um, I, I want to congratulate you on, on your engagement awareness strategy. I think it's really well done, and I think it's a good example for our other committees. Um, and you're already working with the other committees, but you know, we've heard in some of the other presentations, you know, a desire to be able to, you know, get the word out better. And I think what you're doing with that particular work group, I think it's really smart, and I think the other committees could, could learn from that. I love the idea of the Fix-It Fair. I think that was a really good idea, um, and was really excited to hear the, how successful um, your Fix-It people were.
Fixers.
Fixers, yes. Um, that's fantastic. So, um, you know, congratulations on that. That's a, that's a lot of, uh, it's a lot of poundage that was taken out of.
Yes, it is. I was told it was two trucks in November.
That's amazing. So very well done. Uh, Carl is, is known to all of us, not just for his advocacy here, but, um, just for his involvement with the city. Um, uh, you know, it, it should be a relatively simple calculation to, to be able to convert, you know, the, the number of pounds. Uh, we know how many lane miles we have, and we know how much we put down. Um, so that makes sense, whether it's published in that form or it's a, or calculation is made afterwards, uh, unless we're doing sections differently. Um, you know, talking about your climate action plan, one of the things, uh, I would be curious, and I think this may have come up last year when we were talking about, um, goals and just projects in general, is, uh, the idea of climate resiliency and knowing that there's only so much that even the actions that we take, county takes are going to, to impact, not that we shouldn't. Um, but you know, what are the things that we need to be thinking about as, you know, it's not like we're a beachfront community and, and the ocean levels are rising there, but there's still gonna be, you know, changes to our, uh, to our climate over time, and, and what is that going to do? And what do we need to be thinking about that maybe we're not? Um, and as far as, um, your goal of identifying the invasion species, uh, the last thing we want is to have, uh, the kudzu problems that even just Virginia has. Um, and, you know, finding mitigation strategies for those kinds of things. So, um, I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, your strategy and, um, you know, as somebody who walks trails, rides my bike around, um, you know, it, it's important to, to have people who are, uh, doing the work and, and being the eyes on the round for. So thank you for that.
All right, we'll go to Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Jim just stole my comment. I was gonna ask about the non-native invasives. Um, and are you, is, are you seeing things that you're concerned about? Um, you wanna talk about your concerns and, and plans for, for management?
As in specific invasive plants that we're noticing?
Yes.
Yeah, so our Off Trail Team knows more about that. I think they've been submitting their reports to Public Works.
Okay.
Uh, but certainly we have many invasive species all over our city, all over our parks. Uh, there's garlic mustard, there's stilt grass, there's autumn olive. Um, and the, the question is not so much what are the invasives, the question is how can you effectively defeat the invasive and replace them with natives?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeanette, wow, that was an outstanding presentation. Um, the polish, the data that was worked into it, the clear goals that were outlined, and the way that you as a committee have organized into teams to address the different interests and passions and priorities of the committee is outstanding. So I salute you and the entire committee. Um, the mayor is right that there has been a wonderful tradition in this committee, not to disparage any other committee, that they are all excellent in their own way, but there has been a particular tradition in this committee, uh, to try to figure out what the next big thing is, push the envelope, uh, study the current research and trends, um, and obviously, you know, the big overarching existential issues that come along with your mandate, as you talked about things like a climate action plan. Uh, but I think the fact that you are, you all have a full complement of members filling every slot that's available on this committee is also pretty telling that, you know, folks in our community who have expertise and interest in these topics are, uh, chomping at the bit to be involved and to be able to work on these issues and work with us on these issues. Uh, not every committee that we have in the city, uh, you know, has no vacancies. Uh, so, uh, that, you know, to me, that is just a, 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 a great testament to the work that you all are doing. Um, a couple of things that I just wanted to call out, I think everything you've put in there is great, but, um, as, uh, Jim said, you know, your engagement strategies, um, I really appreciate that. I think, uh, you know, it's one thing to have all this great work going on, it's another to make sure that people in our communities know about it, and that they can provide you and us feedback and get more involved as well, and that we can sort of spread the word about what's going on and what they can do in their own lives to, um, help the goals of the committee and the city on these fronts. Um, to that end, I think, uh, it was Sustainable Maryland who organized the first HOA Green Summit, maybe last year? Was it last year or two years ago? Two years ago, it was virtual. Um, I, um, had the honor and the good fortune to speak at that, but I think at that point it was sort of like a pilot project, and then Sustainable Maryland sort of handed it over to the city to continue with it. And I'm really glad to hear that you all are working, uh, with staff and others to continue that project, because again, you've sort of already got, uh, an organized infrastructure of communities. Not every community in our city is an HOA community, of course, and we have to do more to reach out to the others, but at least through this, um, you know, this is one way to reach a lot of communities, and I'm glad you're continuing to do that as well as other, other types of outreach. Uh, I'm very interested to see what the recommendations on assault ordinance are going to look like. Um, uh, I don't wanna speak for my colleagues here, but I think the city's gonna be generally open-minded, uh, but we need to figure out, you know, uh, you know, what the costs and benefits are, and how we scale, and all those kinds of things that we have to figure out every time we, we deal with a, you know, another ordinance, um, that we have to consider. And I'd be very curious, I'm sure you all are working on the research and the presentation for this, you know, what other communities of our size or other communities in our region are doing about this, and, you know, where we would sort of rank in terms of, are we the first to do assault ordinance? Are we the last to do assault ordinance? Uh, those kinds of, of things. And I'm sure as you prepare your presentation, we'll find out more about that. So again, just thank you all very much for your great work and looking forward to continuing.
Thank you.
Neil.
All right. Well, again, as everyone has said, thanks for the presentation, and thanks also for the hard work and good work that this committee has done this year and for so many years at this point. It's been a very productive committee. Um, I became aware of the committee and the city's emphasis on environmental, uh, stewardship back when I was, uh, uh, an HOA, uh, director, and, uh, the Kettlins won a couple of environmental awards. So, I mean, I think it's very meaningful. It's something that, that organizations really strive to achieve, and it's, it's a great thing. Um, you know, I have to say, in your presentation, you scared me when you said we lost Paul Levinka. I wanna make sure he's, he's healthy.
He is alive and well. He's just not with us anymore, which is very disappointing.
Took me back there for, for one second. Um, I'm curious, uh, what your plans are for the improvements to the Rainscapes Rewards Program? I think that's something that where we can get, you know, individual homeowners and property owners involved, uh, and, you know, something that people could really get into as long as there's a solid program that's well, uh, publicized. So what do you have in mind at this point?
Uh, sure. So Adam is the one mainly working on that. He is a process improvement expert, uh, who is also very interested in sustainable gardening and native plants. Uh, so he has been talking to some other people who have thought about Rainscapes, worked with Rainscapes, and he is going to have some recommendations for us. Do you wanna comment right now?
If you wanna come up to the podium, please.
Uh, hi, Adam Young. Um, so I've been, I, I had some, uh, talks with Michael. Uh, he's on our committee as well and on staff, and he's the only one administering it right now. And, uh, I, the big thing he's seen that where Gaithersburg struggles is that there's no dedicated staff person assigned to the program, uh, to help people fill out the forms and submit them and get them approved, whereas the city of Rockville, I believe, has, uh, I don't know the numbers offhand, but at least one to two individuals. And then the county, uh, the county's Rainscapes Program, which is, the city's program is modeled after, has almost like a staff of ten or some, some, something. Um, granted, obviously, the budgets are much larger, but, um, it is somewhat of a complicated process because you do have to, you know, make sure, uh, the person is putting the right native plants in their, in the, on their property and all that. But, um, there are some improvements that we've seen initially that, uh, could hope, hopefully get people, um, some free money, I guess, if they follow the right process.
Great.
Thanks. Look forward to seeing what, what recommendations you make as you go forward in this program.
Yeah, and I also wanna say all credit to, um, their staff liaisons. They've been great, and that's why we are, we are so productive.
Excellent. So, uh, before I go to the public, if there's anybody who'd like to speak, I just, I just wanna pick up a little bit on where Ryan was with the, with the ordinance. It is an unusual thing for committees to draft ordinances. Uh, generally, like, there's been a tremendous amount of success with the Environmental Affairs Committee providing us recommendations, and then the mayor and council, as necessary, would sponsor an ordinance and staff would, would work on the ordinance. So for, to, for the benefit of, of you guys moving forward, I mean, you're welcome to do it, but really, I think your best, the, the most. best, the most direct and best, most effective way for you guys to interact with us is just to make recommendations and then we can take it from there and work with our staff. And the same, same for other committees who may be watching. You know, the, what you're giving us is invaluable and you don't have to, you guys got an agenda that's two pages long. You don't have to get into writing legal documents. We can, we can handle that. But in any event, we appreciate it and we'll, we'll look forward to considering what comes before us. Is there anybody here who'd like to testify, like question, comment on Environmental Affairs? I kind of see a little movement, but I'm not, okay. Let me see if we have anybody. Nobody on Zoom? Okay. Well, thank you guys very much. We appreciate it. Great presentation and it's a really highly effective committee. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Now, we will move on to transportation. And let's see, Sean Emerson and Rob Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council.
Good evening.
Sitting down next to me, I am pleased to introduce Mr. Sean Emerson, the Chair of our Transportation Committee. And I'm happy to announce that Matt Amon, one of our committee members, actually joined us this evening. So.
Welcome to all.
Good stuff.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor Ashman, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to present. Like Rob said, my name is Sean Emerson. I'm the new Chair of the Transportation Committee. It's great to be here with you all tonight. So, our committee charge, I, I think of it simply as just be aware of what's going on in the transportation space, affecting the city, within the city, and anywhere in between. And in that, in that goal, we provide advice to the council and city staff and vice versa. And we also, you know, provide a citizen viewpoint for transportation issues within the city. I think our committee does a pretty good, pretty good job of that. So, we have five members right now and I'm glad to say we're up from two when, when I first joined late last year.
We need more than two, that's for sure.
So, we're very thankful to have more. We do still have two vacancies. So, if anyone's interested for the millions watching at home. So, yeah, I became Chair early this year and we had Stephen Escobar, Matt Amon, and Dave Bellegarde. And Larry Seeger is our veteran member who we're very thankful, he's, he's stayed on, he's been on for quite some time and he's been a great asset with institutional knowledge for the committee. Next, please. So, topics covered in 2022. One of the main things we talked about was Ride On. They have an upcoming Reimagining Study. It's getting started right now. So, we talked about some ways that that could provide results to better serve the city residents. Most of our Ride On routes are set up to get people to Shady Grove, but not necessarily around and within the city. So, we think there's an opportunity there. We also looked at adding more crosswalks and just improving the pedestrian experience in general. Many of our city streets have both sidewalk gaps and crosswalk gaps, including right here in Old Town, which I was walking up here this evening. So, we think there's a lot of room for improvement there and both on our city-owned streets, but of course, most of our busy wider streets are either county or state. So, definitely some room for collaboration there as well. We also looked at micro mobility, e-scooters. They can be a controversial topic, but they are used within the city, if not extensively. But it's something that we thought about talking because we, we do hear about that from the public. We see it. So, we spent some time addressing that. We also looked at bus shelter replacement and repair. We learned a bit of disconcerting news from our city staff that the bus shelters owned by the city, those are those white and green ones that are at many of the stops, that there could be more funding available to both maintain and add new shelters. That's what we're going to look at in the upcoming year as well. And we also talked about some ongoing projects in the city, or I should say upcoming projects, such as in this pathway, the shared use path along Quincenton Boulevard, which will be a real asset for that neighborhood, as well as the upcoming bridge over Great Sonica Highway that Aster Zenic, I believe, has helped fund it to provide better pedestrian crossings there. And we also looked at the surface improvement program, just repaving streets. I know Councilor Harris prioritizes maintaining things and I think he's correct that it's good to take care of what you have. So, that's all we heard from Public Works about that as well. So, some accomplishments. Our biggest committee event of the year is Bike to Work Day, which is just six months away. We helped co-host that with city staff. Our members, all of us, were at both the morning and afternoon pit stop. The morning ones near Kettelins and Great Sonica and Kettelins Boulevard. Afternoon ones right here in Old Town, the Plaza. Larry was DJ and the rest of us were staffing the tables. It was a great event. I think we had about 130 cyclists show up between the two. Most of those were in the morning, about 100 of those were in the morning. We had about 30 come through Old Town in the afternoon. Definitely a big event and we look forward to growing that this upcoming year. We also participated in a walk in Old Town just about a month ago along mostly Diamond Avenue and the street behind it, looking at routes for a potential shared use path to connect us to Washington Grove and ultimately to the MCDOT's path that they're working on there to, to get to Shady Grove Station. So, we walked that with city staff and one of the consulting engineers and did a lot of brainstorming. So, it was a great, great experience. Isaac Sherman participated in the kickoff of the Ride On Reimagining Study Stakeholder Group back in August. I attended that and Rob was there as well from, from city staff. That's a group that will be ongoing. I think they plan to meet maybe a few times a year if you were, but that process is going to be about two or three years. So, definitely some upcoming activity there. And then we also, of course, added the four new members, which I think is probably our, our biggest accomplishment to just grow the committee. We're very thankful that, you know, Carol and Larry were on it and we're glad to have four new members. We hope to get two more in this upcoming year. All right. So, looking ahead, as I mentioned, we think the bus shelter situation is probably the most pressing. We were pretty discerned to learn that over the summer, the city had applied for a grant with MCDOT that would have largely funded the repair and replacement of our existing bus shelters, which I understand are about 20 years old. It was a federal FTA grant, that's my understanding. And we did not get that. That was unfortunate news because there's not a clear alternative funding source for that. And I use a lot of these shelters. There are a lot of them have cracked roofs, not very helpful in the rain, which is a bit defeating of a purpose. So, we hope that that could be something the city council could look at in this upcoming year. Speaking of buses, we also, you know, the Ride On Reimagining Study is just getting kicked off. As I said, that'll be about a two-year process between now and when MCDOT provides some firm recommendations. We think there's a chance for the city to really get involved in that and advocate for some routes that will serve residents better. Like I mentioned, many of our routes are not great for getting around the city. If you want to go from right here in Old Town to Rio or Crown, you have to transfer into Lake Forest or Shady Grove. You can't just get there directly. It's two miles away as a crit flies. So, that's an example of how the network doesn't necessarily serve trips within the city. As we also mentioned, identifying crosswalk gaps. Pedestrian safety is a big issue. I heard some of that brought up earlier in other committees' reports. We think there's a real opportunity to improve that in many different ways, both just adding markings, adding lighting, looking at where gaps can be filled in, things like that. We also want to explore ways to increase association equity about micro mobility. As I mentioned, with the e-scooters and to a lesser extent e-bikes, they've become more and more popular. And we hear a lot of complaints about how they're, you know, not properly used, how there could be a lot more education, how to ride safely, where to ride, do they belong in the street, on the sidewalk, and what's the context there. We think that's something that should be looked at. We think whether someone's riding the device or if someone's walking and doesn't want to get, you know, run over by someone who is, I think there's room to, to look at that. And we want to also improve Bike to Work Day 2023. Like I said, we had a great event this past year. We think it could be even better, especially looking at the afternoon, trying to boost some turnout at our afternoon pit stop here in Old Town. We know that there might be more riders in the morning at any given spot just because you're going into work, but we like to look at ways to kind of boost attendance at the Old Town stop and also just looking at, are there other ways you can loop in local businesses, community groups, HOAs, just kind of spread the word and, you know, make people aware that you do have these two pit stops in the city, which is just a great chance to convene. And it's where we learn a lot about, you know, ongoing issues from the public. So, we want to look at improving that. I think that's, anything else? Oh, yeah. We also provided, I'm sorry.
It's identifying the points of interest.
Yeah. So, we also are hoping to identify points of interest in the city strategic plan as well, which is an ongoing thing.
Great.
Then questions. And before, one moment, if I could, I'd like to thank Rob, who's been a great staff liaison, as well as Brian Fields from Public Works. He's great as well. And thank you, Councilor Harris, for attending Bike to Work Day and your e-bike both in the morning and the afternoon. So, we appreciate the support from the city staff.
Awesome. Thanks so much, Sean. Thanks to all the committee members and to Rob. On Bike to Work Day, that always happens the day right before the book festival, which is why I'm almost, I, I can't, I just cannot participate as much as my heart is, is in it, is in it and I'm there in spirit. It's just a terrible day for me. Rob, the, about the, we didn't get the grant for the bus shelter maintenance this past year. Is there an opportunity in, in the, the next year to get it? Or will, will, will these funds never be available again? What's the status with that?
So, of course, I told Brian Fields he didn't have to attend tonight because this is really in his wheelhouse because it's DPW. My understanding is, you know, the grants are circular. So, one of the things I believe DPW is doing is, if I'm correct, is issuing an RFP. There are multiple options. Obviously, free money is the best money for repairing things, but looking at other opportunities. It'll come back around. I believe this was a state grant. So, those are typically, you know, hopefully, and especially with the change in administration, if the governor-elect holds to his policy points that he supports initiatives like transit and things like that, hopefully it'll be refunded. But from the city perspective, my understanding from Brian is, you know, we still have to move forward with trying to resolve this. And a lot of that is tied in with the Ride On Reimagine study. Also, one of the big things that came out, poor Sean had to work. I attended the stakeholder meeting last week, again, with their survey. So, a lot of the issues that have come out is, you know, to boost this stuff, the, the need for more shelters throughout the Ride On system. So, I think we're, we're going to see traction at, at the county level. And historically, you know, in a number of issues, we have always piggybacked with them potentially on a contract. So, this would be beneficial. So, we're, we're moving forward with something. There should be some sort of resolution in 2023. Just yet, I, I don't quite know what that will be.
Okay. Thank you for that. We'll go to Neil as the liaison.
All right. Well, thanks for the presentation and thanks for your good work, Sean and Matt and the whole committee. Really refreshing to see all the new members and the new energy that's in this group. It's quite a, quite a change from where it was the last few years. So, really appreciate that and the focus on many area aspects of transportation and not just the two-wheel kind. So, how much, how much of a grant were we looking for for the bus shelter issue?
I'd have to get back to you again. I was not involved with that. That is through Department of Public Works.
This is the presentation. You need to be ready.
More than $100.
It was enough then, it would have funded the replacement of all of these shelters.
Yeah. So, it's like 32 shelters.
It's not an enormous amount of money, but, you know.
Tens of thousands, somewhere in that range.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, you know, it's, as we're about to go into session, we have a new, new administration and the state legislature is about to go into session. There's always the opportunity to ask for money there as well. So, hopefully, we'll take a look at that. And Tom Mondegan, are you paying attention?
Yes.
All right. Thanks. Also, I'm really glad that you're focusing on the Ride On Reimagining. You know, clearly, the bus routes were designed before many of the activity centers in our city were really in existence, you know. The, you know, as you said, the buses can get you to Lake Forest and to Shady Grove Metro, but not to a lot of the other places that people want to go. And, you know, honestly, I, I watch buses go by that are virtually empty. So, clearly, they're not serving the needs of people that actually want to get somewhere. And having buses ride around is probably not good environmentally if there's nobody in them. So, you know, the other, other area that we had addressed in years past, which was the gaps in the bicycle network, you know, you've kind of taken it to the next step to look at crosswalk gaps and things like that. Those, those are really important and bring, you know, bring those to our attention and to the staff's attention as we, as you discover more gaps so that we can address them and make it easier to get around safely. So, again, thank you for your good work. You know, at least Bike to Work Day isn't on the day of the book festival. Maybe you could combine it with Fix It Day.
Fix the bikes.
Easy on Fix It Day. We're going to get that straight. Get that straight now.
All right. Anyway, thank you for the good work. Look forward to more as we go forward.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Rob.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. And thank you, Sean. Thank you, Rob, for the presentation and for all the hard work you're doing. You know, the, the looking ahead, you know, I think you, you're hitting all the, the right priorities. I have a lot of conversations with folks around the community about, about bus shelters in particular. And quite frankly, I'm not up to speed on, on who owns what and who pays for what. But certainly, it is an equity issue that I think we need to address. One thing that I see, don't see here that I, I think was, it was near and dear to me because I came off the Transportation Committee, was this notion of connectivity for mixed modal transportation in the city, bikes, pedestrians. We've, we've done a lot of great things and we have a lot of great focus on big-ticket projects. Mist Path is wonderful. But getting from point A to B and fully utilizing those big-ticket items involves connectivity. And so, I would say, one thing that I would like to see here is a focus on both connecting the infrastructure, but something I mentioned perennially is wayfinding. And you can just look south of us to Rockville. They have a great network of, you can be anywhere in the city and know without GPS where you need to go. And you have the facilities and the pass to get there. I, I would love to see that kind of connectivity in Gaithersburg. I would like to see that kind of connectivity between Gaithersburg and Rockville. I know there's a stakeholder in between there that I think in recent years has been more focused. And, and the other issue that I would amplify is that center one, the, the crosswalk gaps. And it, you know, I, I think it's exceedingly important, given the events that have been happening in the city and throughout the county. I, I don't think it's just an added emphasis. I think that what I'm seeing is, is a trajectory in the wrong direction. And I think it takes more than, you know, restriping, identifying where crosswalks need to come. Unfortunately, in my estimation, you know, the most tragic things aren't preventable through education and visibility. We need to talk about engineering changes and we need to put money behind it. You know, I, I go down to Tampa for reserve duty probably once a quarter. Every time I'm there, over the last few years, there's been a shift, a, a large shift in the networks that I'm seeing, where they're wholesale taking up roads and putting in shelter crossings. They're putting in Hawklights. They're putting in things that, that keep stupid drivers, or worse, from being able to do the worst things to pedestrians and, and folks that aren't in cars. And so, I, I would, and, and Rob probably has heard me say this many times. He's probably sick of it. I, I think we need to put money where our mouth is and, and, and seriously think about how we build out that network and how we build out that safety, not just through education and cosmetic changes, but through engineering changes to, to keep people safe. But great work, great focus. Thank you.
Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you again, Sean. Thank you so much for the presentation. As another former member of the committee, I'm really excited to see the expanded focus of the committee and looking at all of these things. But they, they do have a, a common theme and that is that interconnectivity between our centers. And I love the increased focus on, on the updated Ride On and, and looking at being able to connect people between, between different important parts of our city. And currently, you can't get there without getting on a, without getting in your car. As somebody who rides their bike all around the city and, and has experienced some of the challenges with drivers not paying attention and, and, you know, really, you know, I, I do this for, for exercise and I've gone the entire perimeter of the, the city. I've gone through the city. You know, things like micro mobility, I think are real opportunities to improve connectivity. When I came back from a business trip to Grand Rapids, I talked about, you know, being able to take an e-scooter over there from downtown back to my hotel. It was a, it was 10-minute drive, but it was safe. You know, I didn't feel, you know, a challenge. It was even a pretty steep hill, but I was able to do it. I, currently, I don't even know if we had the full flight of, of scooters, if you'd even really be able to do it because we don't have that connectivity. And one of the things that surprised me about how it was done there, and I think they may do this in DC as well, is that you have to put that scooter back into a, into a spot. You know, it's, it's set up to be this is where they live versus just people abandoning them. And I think as we look at this and expanding, I think asking what's going to make the most sense, where should these live? Where, you know, the bikes, the scooters, et cetera, we've. We've had one or two show up in Sabre because obviously we don't have the commercial centers nearby. But it doesn't mean we wouldn't want to get on one and ride up to, you know, Flower Hill, which is outside the city. However, you know, that's kind of where we would go on one of those. We don't have that. Even something as simple as, as the, the bike lanes, um, something, uh, Mid-County Highway, there's a shoulder, but there's not a bike lane on it. Most of that's outside of our purview, it's a state road. But when you start thinking about those connectivities and what are, where are the safe places to go? And looking at that, that future of Lake Forest, um, you know, we're going to need to have that connectivity. I agree with, with Rob about what, you know, Rockville has in their Millennium Trail and the, and the wayfinding sign. I'm really excited about that connectivity through Washington Grove to be able to, you know, connect Old Town and Shady Grove. It, it, I find it ironic that we have the Bike to Work Day in the afternoon in Old Town because it's one of the most bike-unfriendly parts of our city. You know, I, I was almost hit two blocks from there down by Don Jorge's, just a driver not paying attention. So, uh, I'm excited to, to see where we can go. I appreciate the, the efforts of the committee. And this may not be a question you can ask Rob, but with the infrastructure deal, were there, is there anything from that, from those federal funds that might be able to be used for those bus shelters in that manner?
I think from the state, because remember it trickles down, so we don't get direct. I think that's sort of where some of the funding came for these grants through MDOT, is through the infrastructure repair. So it's still the, the competitiveness of, of going, because it is a finite dollar amount spread amongst them. When you think about the state and some of the infrastructure needs throughout the state. I thought they had bumped up, um, some of their grants related to bike ped facilities. So, so that was going on. Obviously, there's bridge repairs going throughout the state, but, but I think stuff could occur. One of the things quickly that I just want to jump on that some of the council members have brought up, um, and Sean is, uh, you know, selling the committee short. Part of the goal, you know, with this connectivity, the first step, as discussed in this current fiscal year strategic plan, is the identification of, of the points of interest. Um, and, and the strategic plan then talks about the next step after identifying that is where the gaps in connectivity. So Transportation Committee has been great in, in wanting to bite off that task to assist staff in, in trying to figure out, you, you know, not everything can be a point of destination, uh, but, but it's trying to work things. As to wayfinding and branding, staff has been participating for over a year with Montgomery Planning. They started an initiative with MC DOT and invited the jurisdictions for a comprehensive branding exercise related to wayfinding for bike ped, all of that. So that should be coming to a head in another month. I think we have our final meeting. Part of the goal of inviting the jurisdictions, the municipalities to this, including Tacoma Park, was that if we want to take it up, there can be a standardized thing. So much to what Councilmember Wu was talking about, you know, if you get on 355 in Gaithersburg, you can see contiguous, you know, standard signage and wayfinding all the way down to Bethesda. Um, and that's where, you know, sort of, you know, it was great that Sean and the rest of the committee were able to do the walk with our consultant for our TLC grant. You know, that could be another perfect opportunity, um, once they get the final designs, if we wish to move forward with it, you know, to begin branding, you know, getting us from Old Town over to Shady Grove through Washington Grove. If there was standard signage, that essentially can go through two or three different jurisdictions. So, um, all of these things are working. The committee, again, actually having members and excited members has been great for staff because, you know, they help us out a lot. So that, I just wanted to make sure the council understood there's other stuff, you know, still working that didn't come up in tonight's presentation.
Excellent. And just finally, I just want to kind of amplify what Rob said about, you know, the, the fact that sometimes you have to look at the engineering in terms of pedestrian safety. And I want to thank Brian and the mayor for, for meeting with me over several months ago now and just looking at Old Town and, and speed limits and, and thinking about what can be done there with terms of pedestrian safety, bike safety, um, and, and, you know, figuring as development happens in Old Town and how can we look at, um, you know, maybe reducing the speed in, in some places. Right now it's engineered for thirty. You know, maybe that's too fast and, and looking at that. So hopefully as Fishman comes online and we, we look at what can be done, just making sure that we're building those things. And I know we are into the process, so thank you.
Thanks. Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sean and Rob. Transportation in, in general, for me anyway, is, is this large, complex beast that seems to be ever-changing. You know, I now look at, at micro mobility and the growth and I'm not sure if there's regulation tied to it. If, if there is, is the regulation strong enough to keep, keep folks safe who choose to, to, to jump on? But it, it just, it, no real question, just a statement that it just seems ever-changing. So thank you for the, the work that you do and for the progress that you made to, to tackle this beast of transportation needs and, and pedestrian safety. It is, it seems insurmountable, but you guys are, are stepping up to the challenge. So, so thank you.
Lisa, you're losing your voice. So if, I'm, I'm not going to call on you unless you raise your hand from now on. Okay, Ryan?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Echo a lot of the sentiments that have already been shared. Sean, congratulations or perhaps condolences on becoming chair of the committee. Uh, no, all, all joking aside, kudos on increasing the size of the committee membership, a hundred and fifty to two-hundred percent. I mean, that's no small feat. And I think you're well poised to make more progress toward the goals that you outlined tonight. And so I'm looking forward to seeing all the work that you all do in the next year. And I know you all work very hard on these, on these, these beastly, complex issues. I did want to echo what Councilmember Harris said about other potential opportunities for funding on the bus shelter issue. I think he's absolutely right that with a state legislative session on the horizon, it may be an opportunity for us to leverage our relationships in the session. We do occasionally get opportunities to advocate for bond bills and other types of funding, which this might be a good candidate for, we'll see. So please, you know, Rob, have staff get back to us on what the specifics are, what kind of money we're looking for. And then we can get with Tom and, and, you know, our, our outside legislative team and think about what our possibilities are to maybe help on that front if we can. So that's all I wanted to add. But thank you very much for an excellent presentation and we appreciate all you guys do.
Thanks, appreciate your support.
All right, is there anybody here who would like to add? Yeah, come on up.
Yeah, hi, I have a quick question. Um, you mentioned the, um, the bridge over Great Seneca. Is there a timeline on that?
It's ways out. As far as I know, it's in at least preliminary design right now, might be moving to advanced design. I don't think construction is going to happen for at least two or three years.
It's a dangerous intersection, at least.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, just, we just recently had a work session. I don't remember what the date was, but it was in, it was in last month, it was in November. And you might want to take a look at the city's YouTube channel because we had a full update on the pedestrian bridge project. So, any other questions or comments?
Just a, a quick update. The, the grant that was applied for, we obviously were partnered with the county. We were trying to leverage federal funds. Our share was going to be two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand. We were going to leverage an additional nine-hundred or so K of federal funds, but I do think the funds are flowing through a state program.
Okay, but this is the one we did not get?
This is the one we did not get, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I, I would say the county didn't get, we were partners with the county.
Yeah, we weren't the lead applicant.
I don't like to lose.
It's their fault, county.
Okay, um, all right. And I don't see anybody on Zoom, so thank you guys very much. Appreciate the presentation, appreciate your partnership. Next, and finally, we have our Economic and Business Development Committee. And we're going to have Tom Lauder and Seager from our staff and Jamil Hernandez from the committee do the presentation. Welcome to both of you. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so I'm new to the committee, got the big slide. And as you all know, the Economic Business and Development Committee is represented by a, by a broad array of stakeholders that represent small, medium, and large business from different sectors of our economy, lifestyles, development, nonprofit, and even governmental stakeholders. Like I said, I'm new to it, so I'm trying to do my best to represent. I attended most of the meetings that are listed here, for the ones that I'm not, Tom will help me out.
You could wing it either way, we're not going to know. You taking attendance, Neil?
Neil Harris is, is our, is our council liaison and I appreciate that he's there most meetings and asks very good questions. One of the things I appreciate about the, the staff and the committee members is they're well, well-prepared and their questions, as any of you who know me, I like to ask a lot of questions, but these folks also ask really good questions, which helps bring people like me, you into it to, to, to better understand and set up the city for success. In terms of the guiding principles of the committee, as you know, is to focus on retaining businesses, make the, continue to make the city a great and inviting place for new opportunities and economic development. Some strengths and challenges, we look at those here. And the challenges of note that, you know, some of these are seasonal, like, you know, possible recession or slowdown in the housing and office market. Some of them are structural in terms of the makeup of the ci, of the city, and same with the strength. And I won't read every slide, I'm sure you, you've read through some of these. And we're your last presentation to get home, so go through these. In terms of meeting topics, this is one of the, you know, really enjoyable things of, of the meeting. I just, you get to, you know, Senator Holland, Van Holland came and spoke. You have people that come to the committee to, you know, hear about like the Walnut Hill Shopping Center Annexation Project, representatives from NIST and different sort of tech opportunities that are available, as well as, you know, in terms of like Economic Development Incentives Review, which was from the committee in terms of asking staff, what can we do? Uh, you get a pretty good agenda of different projects and presentations representing a vast array of economic development opportunities for the city. Most important, which is our most recent one, was the Lake Forest Mall Sketch Plan. As you all know, it's going through the process. And just a small note, accommodation for y'all who were part of making that master plan or redevelopment that has now set up the city for success as this project goes to further development. One short note on staff, um, one of the things that I like is after every meeting or before every meeting, if there are questions or follow-ups, you can go and they're, you know, they almost deserve some kind of hazard pay for the amount of questions that are allowed about them, that they're always very well prepared for us. And there's a 2023 priorities thing, like you said, Lake Forest Mall, I think is the biggest one. How to take advantage and use of the infill up and redevelopment opportunities. I understand the city is also going through a good zoning code rewrite and update. And as always, an old-time redevelopment and what can be done with those B and C class office properties that are not for, fully utilized. Excellent.
Well done. That was, that was speedy Gonzales. That was, that was great. So I want to thank you and your fellow committee members. This is, uh, this is probably our most popular committee in that I am constantly getting asked by people, can you appoint me to that committee? And it's full of my, the person I most recently appointed had waited at least a year and a half to, for someone to drop off the committee for there to be an opportunity. And that speaks to, um, the, the interest level in this city and the business expertise. It's a tremendous group representing a, a diverse array of industry and, um, business experience. And we rely on the recommendations and opinions of that committee in a lot of the things that we do. So when I look at the 2023 priorities, Lake Forest obviously sort of looms larger than everything, but, but infill and redevelopment opportunities along 355, huge zoning code rewrite, huge project. We're, we definitely welcome the input. Old Town revitalization has been a big priority for twenty years. Supporting local biotech, the, and the future of Class B and C, um, that's going to be a big issue. That's a, that's a rising issue in the city of Gaithersburg. So, um, you guys have it, have it covered and we really value the, the recommendations and feedback. So thank you. Questions, comments, who'd like to speak next? Ryan? Oh, yes, you're the, yes.
All right, thanks. Well, uh, thanks, uh, Jamil, Tom, Sharon, who's not here tonight, but who's been a, a real driver of what goes on at this committee and the whole. As the mayor said, the committee is always in high demand. Maybe we should think about charging a membership fee.
Using it to fix bus shelters.
Given the nature of the, of the committee, people probably have money. But, uh, anyway, um, I mean, the committee, as Jamil said, is, there's always an interesting discussion around issues that are vital to the city, um, and we always get great input. You know, just to throw a, a, a small idea out there, I just had a meeting, um, as many of us had, with some folks who want to open a new business in Old Town that's not allowed in the zone. Maybe we should bring them in and see what makes sense, uh, as well for a different type of business that's, uh, then is what's there today and whether it's a good fit or not a good fit and give us a recommendation. And so I don't have a lot more to add. I mean, this committee's, you know, been very active. I've been, I would actually join the committee about two years before I was on the council, so I think I get my tenure pin sometime soon. So Tom, make a note.
Another tiara.
I've still got the tiara that Lisa wants for her new presidency, vice presidency.
No one in the public has any idea what you're doing. They just think Neil, headline Neil has a tiara somewhere.
If they watched the last meeting, they'll probably know what, what that was all about. You have to stay up with the plot here. And anyway, I won't, I won't belabor this any further. It's a, it's been a very productive committee and I'm very happy to participate as, as much as I'm allowed to.
Thank you, Neil.
I will note as a follow-up on the last, in the last discussion, uh, the question about the work session on the pedestrian bridge, the date on that for anybody who's interested was November fourteenth. So if you wanted, if you want, and thanks to Michelle Bettencourt for looking that up. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Jamil, thank you for the presentation. Happy to have you on the committee and appreciate you sticking around late tonight and having to wait through the other committee presentations to give yours. On and off, I have been the liaison for this committee over the years and it's just always a, a fun and very thoughtful discussion at those committee meetings. So I agree with everything you said. And I wanted to kind of take it back to one of the early slides in your presentation, the, the slide on, on guiding principles, which really talks about, you know, the need for a tax base to be able to support all these other programs and all these other great committees and work that we've been discussing already, um, throughout the night. And it sort of underscores how interconnected all of that is. And, you know, we talked about that a little bit with some of our other committees like Environmental Affairs and how they want to kind of reach out to different other committees to talk about, you know, ways to sort of cross-pollinate. But if we don't have any money coming from a tax base, uh, we can't do anything. So it's really so important that we listen to this committee, that we work closely with this committee and try and figure out how we can have the resources to make advances on all of these fronts. And, uh, so I just want to say I appreciate you pointing that out. Uh, we appreciate the work of the committee and for all of the big projects that you highlighted that are coming up over the next year, we're looking forward to working with you on those as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan.
Jim?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Jamil, thank you. Good to see you again, as always. Tom, you too. I mean, obviously what this committee does and what Tom and Sharon you do are so important to the, the future of the, the city. And it really is one of the, the differentiators for us in the marketplace. And, um, you know, even just seeing the, the conversation around Walnut Hill and the potential of that and the fact that, you know, Gaithersburg is perceived, rightfully so, as, you know, more business-friendly and, and willing to work with people who want to invest in our city, whether it's Old Town, whether it's in, you know, Lake Forest, whether it's in Kentlands or Crown or whatever. You know, we have multiple opportunities and, and a lot of that is due to the hard work of the committee and of, of staff. So, um, you know, we're, we're really fortunate to have such, you know, a, a wealth of brainpower going against these and being forward-thinking. I know Tom mentioned that Sharon was starting the, that, that work group, looking at the B and C. And I think that's incredibly important because we all know with COVID, you know, this is a changing marketplace. And, you know, this is, this is the group that has their finger on that pulse. So thank you and as things. And as things continue to, to come up, we know that you're going to, you know, get to, you know, you're already going to know once, like, if we're, if we're hearing about it, like, on Twitter or something like that, like, oh yeah, we already know, and here's what the whole thing is. So, thank you for that, and appreciate all the work. Thank you, Jim.
Rob Wu?
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have much to add, other than, you know, your 2023 priorities is kind of a what's what of all, of the groundbreaking, important projects in the city. And we value very much the input that the committee provides through staff, and then, obviously, always the staff's input to us and guiding us forward. And the other thing is, is I was looking at the TV when Ryan was speaking. His shirt, his jacket's just blinding. My goodness, man.
This is your shirt, man. Thank you. I'll take that as a compliment.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay. I'm going to call on Lisa, but grudgingly, because she's losing her voice. Go ahead.
But, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is important for me to, to say. I wanted to share, thank you for the presentation. Great to see you, Jim. I wanted to relay a comment that now County Council President Evan Glass shared with us at South House one night, that he would like to model the county's economic development after the way that the city does it. And that, those aren't verbatim, but that was the, the sentiment that he relayed. And I wanted to share that with you, because it is absolutely true and important for you to know that the work that you do, how much it matters that the county's paying attention and wants to follow the path of the city of Gaithersburg for economic develop, development. So, bravo, bravo, bravo. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lisa. Very quickly, I do want to not only thank Jamil, but the, the members. You know, every month or so, we deliberate programs and projects and policy that are, you know, sometimes fun and sometimes heavy. But, as you pointed out, it's almost always a full house, and they're very deliberative and considerate. And the guidance we receive from them is incredibly helpful, as much for staff as it is for you. So, I do like to recognize them. To your point, Mr. Mayor, about how hard it is to get a committee member on, I, I, you know, hate to phrase it like this, but we lost a committee member this year, this year, and I wanted to recognize, to leap that for...
Thank you for doing that.
Sure. For his very long tenure. He was from NIST on the committee and, and...
Not a sweeter guy in this city.
No, there, there wasn't. And he was a terrific asset to the, to the committee and a friend to all of us. So I just wanted to mention him before the evening ended.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay. Do we have anybody who would like to testify on Economic and Business Development Committee? Not seeing anyone jumping up here. Let me just check Zoom. And nope. Okay. Well, thank you all very much. Jamil, excellent presentation. So I want to just give everyone notice that we will not be having a work session, will not be having a meeting or a work session over the next two weeks, December 19th or December 27th. The next regular meeting of the Mayor Council will be on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. So that means everyone gets to celebrate everything between now and then. And we wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, happy, all the other stuff that you celebrate, and a wonderful New Year. We look forward to what we can all get done in the New Year together, in the greatest city in the world. And very, I, I know I'm speaking for everyone here when I say we're all very, very grateful to be where we are and to be with all of you. So with that, I'll, one more reminder, Winter Lights is going on. And check the city website for events happening at the Arts Barn and Casey Community Center. If you want to take the kids to see Santa, there will be opportunities. Until next time, happy holidays, and let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.